I call to order the Aetna Township, Licking County Board of Trustees. Aetna Township Special Meeting and Public Hearing here on Wednesday, June 12th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Burkhulver?
Here.
Ms. McKee? Absent.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhulver?
Yes. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for the M1 text amendment?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhulver?
Yes, we are now in the public hearing. I'm going to go through the timeline first of how this amendment came to us, and then I'm going to read the actual resolution that came from the Board of Trustees, so you have a little more detail what this amendment is about. So first of all, on March 5th, 2024, the Aetna Township Board of Trustees passed Resolution 2024-15 to initiate an amendment to the Aetna Township zoning resolution pertaining to Article 9 District Resolutions to remove a number of conditional uses from the M1 zoning district. On March 20th, 2024, the Aetna Zoning Commission forwarded the proposed M1 text amendment to the Licking County Zoning Commission for a non-binding recommendation. On April 22nd, 2024, the Licking County Planning Commission voted to make a non-binding recommendation of approval for the requested zoning amendment application Z-24-3. On May 14th, 2024, the Aetna Township Zoning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed M1 text amendments to Article 9 District Regulation Section 909 Light Manufacturing District, which is M1, conditionally permitted uses. The Aetna Township Zoning Commission recommended approval to the requested text amendment with a unanimous affirmative vote and forwarded the recommendation to the Aetna Board of Trustees. On May 30th, 2024, the Notice of Public Hearing to the M1 text amendment at the Aetna Township Trustees Special Meeting for June 12th, 2024 was published in the Newark Advocate. Now I want to read the actual resolution, which Mr. Evans has been working on, but which was presented to the board and passed by the trustee board on the March 5th, 2024 meeting. The resolution, which is Resolution 2024-015, Resolution to Initiate an Amendment to the Zoning Resolution pertaining to Article 9 District Regulations. Trustee Evans moved the following. Whereas the Aetna Township Board of Trustees, the board can initiate amendments to the zoning resolution per Ohio Revise Code 519.12 by passage of a resolution by the Board of Township Trustees. And whereas Article 9 District Regulation Section 909 Light Manufacturing District M1 states, "The purpose of the M1 district is to allow for the development of manufacturing and wholesale businesses." Establishments that are clean, quiet, and free of hazardous or objectable elements such as noise, odor, dust, smoke, or glare operate entirely within enclosed structures and generate little industrial traffic and whereas there are several conditional use codes currently within Article 9 District Regulation Section 909 Light Manufacturing District M1, comma, B point two, manufacturing which do not fit within the stated objective. These conditional uses are NAICS, which is a National Classification, Industrial Classification Code, 324121 Asphalt Paving Mixture and Block Manufacturing, NAIC Code 324122 Asphalt Shingle and Coating Materials Manufacturing, NAICS Code 327310, and that is Cement Manufacturing, NAICS Code 327320 Ready Mix Concrete Manufacturing, and NAICS Code 327331 Concrete Block and Brick Manufacturing, NAIC Code 327332 Concrete Pipe Manufacturing, and NAICS Code 327390, which is Other Concrete Product Manufacturing. And then it was now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Aetna Township, Licking County that the following Resolution be and hereby is as follows. And that was the adoption to remove those sections from the M1 Light Manufacturing section. And that resolution was seconded by trustee McKee, and it passed unanimously. At this time, I, are there any comments or further presentations or comments from the township trustees? Mr. Evans, I'll yield the floor to you since you initiated this.
No, I, we've included all the information to the public, the staff reports, letters, you know, all that. So I think everybody has that information. Everybody throughout the process has recommended that these be removed. There were some discussions that if it was a wholesale banning of these through the township, there could be an issue. However, there is area in our corporate park that would be suitable for these uses, so is not an outright ban. But I think it does protect the residential districts in our township from these, these uses which are, I don't believe are fitting for a transitional industrial use to residential use. They're more suited for M2 or M3. So, and those are, like I said, still allowed within that corporate park as it stands.
So at this time, we will entertain any comments from the audience, and please come to the microphone, state your name and your address. I think I'll extend the time to five minutes, and since we don't have a very large crowd. So is there anyone at this time that would like to speak in support or against this text amendment? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Jeff Cattunio, 10095 Tolgate Road, Southwest. So, a lot of the NICS code you mentioned have, you know, I am in the concrete business. You guys are mainly talking about my property, and I'm zoned M1. So a lot of the NICS codes you mentioned, like the 327331, it has like blocks, concrete and cylinder manufacturing. This is something like I would be interested in maybe going into. You see those block retaining walls? There's one at the, what's that bar over there, that Deskin Zones?
Cousins.
Cousins. So those blocks that hold the retaining wall back were manufactured there. And then there's NICS Code 327390, Other Concrete Product Manufacturing. There's architectural walls, concrete precast, precast manufacturing, garden furniture, lentils, pre-stressed concrete manufacturing. So, you know, I understand getting rid of the ready mix and the cement manufacturing NICS codes, but there's a lot of other NICS codes that I would be interested in maybe like opening up to like my business deal. So I'm just here speaking. I didn't know if you guys were aware and looked specifically at the NICS codes. So I have no further comments. So any questions from you guys?
Any questions, Mr. Evans?
You said you are currently manufacturing the blocks and those, the...
No, that's, like the blocks at Cousins?
That was an example of something that you would be interested, okay.
Those are blocks for retaining walls, and there's a, there is a demand for those right now. Architectural wall panels, maybe in the future.
Would those be manufactured indoors or outdoors?
That's, it's a conditional permit, so you guys could have the condition say, okay, yeah, you can manufacture them, but it has to be indoors. That's, that's up to you guys, or the zone, the BZA. So all these are conditional. So you guys, the BZA has the authority to say, okay, you have to manufacture this indoors at certain amount of time and so forth.
Okay. Well, I think one of my concerns, at least, where the M1 is supposed to be for indoor manufacturing is it's not supposed to be for indoor and/or outdoor at specific times or, because M1's supposed to be transitional to the residential districts, and that's why it's really supposed to be minimally industrial. So I do have concerns there, and like I said, when it approaches upon residential, and I know you're, we're not talking specifically your property, but your property was rezoned to put it closer to residential. It was from ag to resident, to M1.
So my, the majority of my property was zoned M1.
Correct. The northern portion.
Yeah, and there was like a hundred foot or fifty foot strip that was zoned agricultural.
Correct.
And no one knows the reason why that was agriculture, cultural.
Well, when they zoned, they did a certain distance from the interstate.
Seventy, yeah, like two.
And, and so they said, okay, that's it. But like I said, that, what, again, we're not talking about your specific property. This is M1 in general. There's other M1 areas. But there, like I said, there was, the M1 was further away from the residential district, then it was brought closer. But again, this, this involves all M1 districts. But again, my, my issue with having this included in M1 is it's supposed to be totally indoors. And you're talking outdoors, you're talking possibly, and that's where even with the BZA, leaving it conditional, i- if the true intent is one thing, there can be issues if the BZA goes another way. So, but we're not dealing with the BZA, we're not, it's just these uses. So I understand your wishes, I'm just trying to ensure that whatever activity is approved, either approved or conditional, fits in within that district to protect our residential districts from that more heavier industrial use.
Right, I understand.
And when you get into concrete manufacturing, there's dust, there's the traffic, you're gonna either have to bring concrete in, ship these things out, so I don't think it would meet the limited industrial traffic.
When you guys say traffic, there's, I can do, M1 is transportation business. Amazon could be on M1. FedEx, M1, yes.
Right. And we're, the zoning commission's going through the M1 right now, there's been a lot of, I mean, in the past, if we want to look at the Langille property up there, Drayton Hall, I should say now, that was put in, apartments were put in under residential hotels, they're apartments. And there's a lot of, and the board then, when that happens, retroactively took it out, they couldn't stop that. So I think there's a lot of things that weren't given the forethought or due diligence in placing them in there. So we're kind of going through that now. The rest of the M1s, maybe the distribution, transportation shouldn't be next to the residential, because on 310 Palmer, there were, there was a request to put two warehouses with a entrance and exit thirty foot from the property of a house. That doesn't seem to be fitting within that district and that. So like I said, I'm concerned about right now these, to be a little bit more proactive with what's been going on, but definitely we need to address the others, and if there's some we should put in, we should put in. If there's some we should take out, take out, leave it as conditional or leave it as approved.
And you're aware of property values in the area, like if Microsoft just bought that 700 acre farm for 150 million. If the profit margin on cement, since it's a local owned business, like it costs money to transport heavy items. It's not like a data processing where you can shoot data from here to China real quick. So the profit margin for concrete isn't high. So when you say, oh yeah, M2, we have M2 available, they could do that over there, no one's going to buy the property and do this kind of manufacturing because the profit margins aren't there. So they will go further out, east or wherever, they're just, so it's, I'm just letting you know that.
Yeah, no, there's a lot in play, and I do understand that, I mean, especially with heavy things on the road, if you have trucks coming from further away, you're putting more wear and tear on the roads getting to that project site to offload it and that. If you have closer distribution...
I'm saying, I'm saying like, it costs money, transportation.
Right.
Like, you know, the weight of an item costs more to, you know, ship eighty thousand pounds versus ten pounds.
Right.
So all these items, which is concrete, are heavy and it costs money to transfer. So they'll go locally, and that's why the profit margin is on...
Well, I, I think there's two aspects of this, the use codes and the M1 description and what can be allowed, and then the areas that are M2, M3. So I think with...
There is no M3.
I don't, there's no M3, there's M2.
There's M2.
But we're going through a comprehensive plan, and that's where maybe there's other suitable areas away from residential that, hey, that can be M2, and that's what the board should look at, because there might be, might be areas suitable, but next to residential, I'm not sure, because if you go on Taylor Road where there's the concrete and asphalt manufacturing, it's dusty, you smell it, you, that, that's definitely what people are concerned about being next to residential.
Are you, my question is, are you, are you for or against the text amendment? If you'd like to state that on the record?
Yeah, I'm against it.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to speak to this issue, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and...
Phyllis Bundy, 10254 Tolgate Road. Right now, every day, there are trucks in and out of there bringing in ready mix, I'm assuming, I, I don't know where that's coming from, whether, I guess he must be getting it from somewhere, but every day, those trucks are coming in and they're doing something with that, so I'm not sure if that's already approved for them to do that or not, but it is traffic on the, traffic on the road and traffic in that area.
Are you for or against the amendment?
Against it, definitely. Against.
No, for, against the text amendment which will remove...
Oh, no, for, absolutely for.
The what? Okay, very good. Just want to make, get that clarified. Anybody else who'd like to speak at this time?
Rachel Zalasny, 10141 Tolgate Road, Southwest. So I got this video at 5:55 sent to me from my front door, and I'm just gonna play it so you guys can hear like what it sounds like at my house all day. I mean, I won't say it's all day, but it's enough. It is loud, a lot. And I don't appreciate it next to me. I don't appreciate just in general our zoning not being followed and enforced. So I would appreciate it. I am for the text amendment. I feel like there's a place, and I, directly adjacent to residence is not it. That's all.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak at this time? Yes, sir.
Chuck Bundy, 10254 Tolgate Road, Southwest. Mr. Evans said something about the, the plant over in Taylor Road was smelling and dusty, and I might add, and whether it's muddy. So that's not conducive to a residential area, and that's what we're in. They have, at Taylor Road, they have central sewer, central water. Where we live and where this proposition is, we are all on wells, we are all susceptible to groundwater contamination. We are all on our own septic systems. It's a totally different situation than what you have over Taylor Road or, or out of Buckeye Lake. So I want you to consider that when you decide to vote. I am for the amendment.
Steve Wood, 6968 Palmer Road. I'm against this. I did some research on my own. M1 was set, well, at the freeway, when it was put in place, the residential property was then built and acquired by Rachel here at some point. And the property, at one point, when they, the majority of it was M1, a small section of it was ag, it had a building on it. Jeff moved his company over there, checked on the building, wanted to start his business over there. And then he does poured concrete, poured walls, all that stuff. Not there. He does it on site. So the work that is there is nothing but what's being put there. Everybody keeps saying, giving her, giving you videos of this noise and that noise. He has every right, just the same as she does, to back a truck into her property, and us have to listen to beep, 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 a pit, right? So she wanted to pour concrete driveway.
Well, let me...
Are you saying that we couldn't have that happen?
Let me, let me interrupt a little bit. Stay focused on the text amendment. We're not talking about a specific case here, we're talking about a text amendment...
The majority of this...
To our zoning, to our zoning resolution that would take those uses out of the M1 zoning, and there is other M1 zoning, and Mr. Evans is correct that this, those uses would be more appropriate possibly in, in an M2. So this, let's stay focused on the text amendment.
And he went one step further with his building.
Keep going.
To do what he wanted to do over there, he wanted to put a building up so it would be indoors. There wouldn't be anything on the outside. He was even gonna go one step further and put in dust collection system. Do they have that on Taylor Road? No, they do not. And when you put in a dust collection system, you have to have a negative pressure on the inside of the building, so that anytime any doors were opened, nothing goes out of the building, it all comes in. So obviously, there was no forethought in any of this when they were going through all this, through the BZA and the zoning commission and all that. You need to have some kind of an idea of what you're dealing with. That's why it says it's an M1 conditional use. It's because you have the people who have the knowledge on the boards and the BZAs and all that that understand what somebody is bringing to them, not just, well, no, we can't have ready mix, it'll look like that out there. No, that's not what he was proposing. He was going one step further and going way above what the EPA would request. But everybody's attacked him from day one and his business. And he has every right, just the same as she does, to exist on that property.
Keep your comments directed to the board, sir. Whether you're for or against the text amendment. I know you want to give some examples, we've heard those, but we want the proper decorum here. So you, you stated you are against the text amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's a conditional use. You have every right at that point in time to evaluate and examine somebody's work of what they are planning on doing. As a zoning commission or a zoning, they have to make sure that they maintain that. So when you do, so it does come to you and wants to build something, you're not just shooting it down because it doesn't work, because it's in a list, especially when it's a conditional use. Find out what it is they're building, find out what it is they're going to do, and what are they gonna do to protect those around them? Not just, oh, no, we can't have that here. And as far as light traffic? He said ten trucks a day. Ten trucks a day. He has that now. So what's gonna change?
Well, this, this hearing is not about a specific case currently.
It is about a specific case. It has since day one.
This is about a text amendment, and...
Y'all, amen here, started complaining, now you're at the meetings.
Mr. Woods, address the board, please.
Yes. Do you have anything else?
No.
I think we've heard your testimony, so thank you.
But he is a local person too, and he has property rights just the same as everybody else.
We, we, we understand your point. Thank you. Anybody else at this time?
John Hanson, 8900 East Main Street. On the, on this whole thing, when it started here, I tried to note down the date, I think the amendment, so was this began after the Cattunia lawsuit was filed or before? That has definitely to do with this amendment.
I don't have the date. I mean, this is on a text amendment, and that's, that's what this hearing is regarding.
Well, it seems kind of retaliatory.
Pardon?
It does seem kind of retaliatory.
Well, I'm not gonna comment on that. You're for or against the text amendment?
I'm against the text amendment.
Okay.
And also, the people that you brought in to stack the BZA under Mark's control, these people...
I, I will, I will, Mr. Hanson, I will caution you, do not make comments against other citizens here or against any trustee here.
Okay, let's go to the area.
State, state your reasons for supporting or not supporting the text amendment, which is...
I do not support it.
Very good.
And one reason is that this text amendment, you're, part of it is based in the complaints about the property there. This property was zoned in 2001 or 2002. Kenny Jacks and Todd Mayes approved it over the objections of Carol Cos, was it Coslow? Carol Coslow. So it's been twenty-some years since this was done. The building out in the middle there was built when it was agriculture, then it was changed. So, you know, you, you do all this stuff, and regarding this, you launch a forensic investigation when if you were here, you wouldn't know what was happening. But, you know, you apparently were in Brookville or somewhere else. So that all has to do with this text amendment. I believe it's retaliatory, and that the date should be looked at. If this is after the Cattunia lawsuit, it's definitely retaliatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at this time? We have another one and another individual. Thank you.
99167 Taylor Road, Aetna. I actually live on Taylor Road, and when those industrial or concrete or whatever you want to call them, Taylor Road was a non-paved road, and if you look closely, there is no residential housing very close to that. Actually, we just put a fire station there. Thank you very much. But you can't compare apples to oranges there. And if you look on Taylor Road right now, because of those trucks, my concern is, is children are going to be killed soon because they're going quickly, they weigh a lot. And Taylor Road has grown and changed. So I am supportive of these changes with this board, because we are going to continue to... to grow, and we are going to continue to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to, a few more? Yes, go ahead. And I'll afford the same luxury to anyone else that would like to speak again.
Phyllis Bundy, 10254 Tollgate Road. I was at the meeting when Ken Jacks and Carol, whatever her name...
Coslo.
Coslo, yes. I was at that meeting. And when that was approved for Tollgate Road, where the property that you're speaking of, it was approved for professional buildings. And that's what, that's what we were all told in our neighborhood. It was going to be a professional-type building, such as a doctor or a dentist or bookkeeping or something of that sort. That, that was the use that that was approved for at that time, because I was at that meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
And I stated your name so that we have it for the record when they...
Thank you.
Have the minutes.
John Hanson, 8900 East Main. So, I think what, I understand what you're saying with the PRO or whatever it was at that time, was Pro Suburban or something like that. And it wasn't zoned out. It was agriculture. So, it's easy, and I think I've done it before, coming to these meetings, confusing the use map and the planning map with the zoning map. Herb Cohen, that had Scream Machine there, he went with me and zoned that property. So, it was zoned for 20-some years. So, then you have, when you have people that move, generic people that move in there, do they have any responsibility to see that that's been zoned? Abdul or whoever has the property there that used to be Rick Mesa's, and I knew Rick pretty well, and, you know, I think he called it Spred Eagle Farms or something like that. But he had 44 acres, and a little more buffer was cut off to it, and there was M1 zoning there. So, the M1 zoning has been there since 2001 or '02, something like that. So, do people moving next to M1 have any responsibility with where they're moving? Do they look there? Or do you go and sit in a puddle and then want to sue somebody because your butt's wet? I mean, it's kind of ridiculous.
All right. I just want to remind everyone, this public hearing has to do with the text amendment.
I'm talking about the text amendment.
Not, not a specific property, though.
Yeah, we'd like to make it not about a specific property. But the property raised over and over and over again is in Pataskla. The concrete plant up there is in Pataskla, I believe. It's not in a township. I'm not even sure if the fire department, that's the buffer she talked about, is in a township. So, when you have a, you know, people coming in, they need to, and these are smart people. I've talked to them. So, these are people that do maybe have some responsibility to see what's around them. Their line property next to M1. What could be put in M1? I always just pick up the zoning book here, or used to. Back then, you would pay eight bucks or something to get one from Laura. But, you know, it's, it's kind of disingenuous that you're sitting here saying that this text amendment is not retaliatory and it's not about Catunia. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, sir.
Jeff Catunio, 10095 Tollgate Road. So, there's a lot of concrete. I'm up here representing the concrete industry, not just myself, but there's a lot of people in town, like the B&amp;D Concrete, the John McAvoy, the Grayfish. There's probably other concrete companies in this, at the township that I'm not aware of. So, for those guys, and I don't know what their properties are. I don't know what B&amp;D's property is, but for him, you know, I look at him, and he did those blocks. So, he manufactured those blocks. And for, like, for you to eliminate it out of the zoning code or resolution, you know, that affects him. Not only me, it affects him. It affects McAvoy, just in the future, if there is a demand for, you know, architectural wall panels. You know, that is an option for us. It's a conditional option, but it will be there in the resolution for an option. I just, I just want to make you guys aware that there's other concrete companies in that township. And I just wish you guys would double-think this. So, I'm okay, like, the NEXCO cement manufacturing, you know, that's fine, eliminate that. The ready-mix manufacturing, actually, under there is transit mix concrete manufacturing. And there's new technology with these trucks that mix concrete in the truck. So, you put the, like, they're called biometric trucks, and it's new technology where you put the concrete, the cement, the sand, and gravel, and water in this truck. It goes to the site, and if they need a yard of concrete, it could pre-mix it in the truck, dump a yard, and preserve the material. So, that's part of the 324320 NEXCO. Like I said, I'm, I understand the cement manufacturing, the 324320, the ready-mix manufacturing, the concrete batch plant. It's, it's, I, it's listed in there, but also in there is the transit mix concrete manufacturing, which are those biometric trucks. So, that's fine.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Evans, do you have...
Do we want, well, do we want to close the public comment part?
Well, do you want anything in the public record, any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to address a couple of things. One thing, Mr. Catunio said that this is not retroactive, so if anybody's already been approved for any uses, they can continue those uses. So, it wouldn't stop anybody that is currently doing that with that approved use. And again, as Mr. Burkeholder said, we're not talking about one property. We're talking about the district and properly classifying uses within the districts. Again, I've been pushing for years to deal with a lot of uses, including other fueling stations for semi-fueling. We talked about, somebody mentioned, distribution facilities. We're seeing a whole host of quality-of-life issues and negative impacts with the distribution center, the FedEx, next to Lynn's Road. And that would be, that's another concern. Is that really M1 with all those trucks dropping, the lights, the stuff? Because the noises there and all the other things. So, we're trying to correct some, I guess, issues from the past, and they might not have been issues back then, but maybe they've turned into issues. We need to be proactive, because, again, we should be able to have harmonious industry with residential. If you look at a lot of other communities, they do it with proper buffering. They do it with proper location. So, again, I think we can look at maybe if there should be an expansion of the M2, where, what makes sense, and that's part of the comprehensive plan. And I would definitely be pushing for that. And I'd just like to say, I'm not against concrete. I've been placing concrete since a teenager in my high school years, and have worked for many crews and worked with a lot of concrete. It, it's a good product. It's a needed product to expand housing and everything. But again, it's the proper placement and proper zoning in our township. And some that say, "Well, we shouldn't, it's property rights. We shouldn't say what's allowed and what's not allowed." That's the whole concept of zoning. And we're trying to make it where it can be harmonious, because even with fencing, residents have a fence height restriction. They have other restrictions. Industry has restrictions. So, it shouldn't be residents just have restrictions, industry doesn't. So, again, I want to reiterate that this is not about one property. This is about the proper classification of uses, and this was just to start. The zoning commission has, I guess, begun yesterday reviewing the total M1 use codes and that, right? And so, that'll be work in progress. They've gone through the ABLB and GB and submitted that to the Licking County Planning Commission. So, this is part of what we're trying to do to just bring proper administration and proper zoning to the township so that we can grow harmoniously.
My brief statement is that the, the, these conditional uses that the text amendment would remove from the M1 zoning category, they are incompatible with the objective, as we read earlier, what the objective of the M1 zoning is. And so, I fully support this text amendment. But with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes. Public hearing is closed at 6:43. Mr. Evans, what is the pleasure of the board?
I, I move to adopt the resolution 2024-030 to adopt the recommendation from the zoning commission pertaining to the request to amend the zoning resolution, Article 9, District Regulation, Section 909, Light Manufacturing District, M1 Conditionally Permitted Uses as specified.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes. Motion passes. Public comments limited to this agenda item. Limited three minutes per person. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
The 89167 Taylor Road, Edna. I do need to apologize to you. You are a business owner, so am I. I do have big concerns about Taylor Road. I wasn't singling out big trucks or your business. I want you to be successful in Edna, because when you're successful, we're all successful. And I do apologize for that. I'm not a great public speaker, but I do have great concerns. And when things were developed on Taylor Road, and as we see that growth, you cannot look away from it. You just cannot. There are many people who still have wells on Taylor Road. Not everybody rounds Brooksbury and Water across Edna right now, as we speak. The growth continues. So, I do appreciate your time. Thanks.
Anyone else at this time? Yes, sir.
So, you guys are looking at, you're looking at the M1 District Resolution?
The zoning commission is.
Are they adding? Are they just going in a defensive mode and removing? Are they going to, like, add?
Well, I can tell you, based on that, they went through the AB, GB, and LB. They removed some, they added some, they combined instead of just the list of all of them. They just said approved this main category, so it's a little bit clearer for the developers, because I think one of the things that we're trying to do is simplify it for the landowners and developers that, to understand what is allowed, what's not. So, there are additions and there are deletions. It's not just, hey, let's limit everything.
What are you guys thinking? What's the zoning thinking about the M1? Are they thinking, you know, to remove the majority of the M1, or you don't know?
I don't, I don't know at this time specifically what those discussions have been yet.
The zoning commission's separate. They're dealing with it. They recommend it'll go to the Licking County Planning Commission. They'll, they're reviewing it right now, and they'll put their input in, and then it'll come to us.
Okay.
And then we make the final decision of, we approve, deny, or approve with modifications.
All right.
Okay. So, if you, if you want input, I would say on M1, go to the zoning commission meetings. Then you can go to the Licking County Planning Commission, and then you can come in.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hanson?
Sure. John Hanson, 8900 East Main. Can the trustees give me an example of something they added back in, in M1, AB or GB? Because all I've seen is cut, cut, cut. I've been at both those meetings, and I was at the meeting last night. So, well, I saw you here after, as you took off. So, can you give me an example of something that was added? You just said that some stuff was taken out, some stuff was added.
Well, nothing by the board has been taken out or added in any of the industrial zones. The only thing that has been changed has been the Planned Residential Conservation District that was back in 2022.
No, I'm talking about yesterday.
That has not come to this board yet, but this...
But I was talking about current day, not four years ago.
It, it's on its way, I think, believe, within 30 or 40 days, we'll have that report from LCPC on AB, GB, and LB.
Yeah, and on the GB, LB, since you mentioned it, then it's unclear whether you were eliminating car lots. Is that correct?
We haven't requested anything at this point, if you understand the process. It went, the zoning commission is the one that has made this recommendation, has been sent to Licking County Planning Commission. They are reviewing it and will provide their staff report and recommendation, at which time the board will. So, the board has had no input on the AB, GB, and LB to this point. This board.
So, Gary, you remember in sociology, the Milgram Experience Experiments? There's always someone else flipping the switch. I understand, not wanting to talk about it, but the last two meetings I'll hear was, let's get rid of this, 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 and this. And on the tow lots, if you do that, you get rid of that, you're granting a monopoly to the two that already have it. If you cut out car lots, which is unclear right now, I'll give you that. But what about somebody that's here and they want to go somewhere else? They, they've not been successful and want to build. But it's kind of prejudicial against a whole class of people. It really is. I mean, shake your head all you need, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me just make the comment that there are three ways to initiate a text or map amendment. Well, on a map, it's usually someone that comes in for rezoning, but on a text amendment, it can either be the Board of Trustees, as it was in this case. It was initiated, it then went to the, the Edna Zoning Commission, which then put it over to Licking County for their review, their recommendations, back to the Edna Township Zoning Commission, which had a public hearing, and then to us here tonight with a hearing and an action, which we took place on that resolution. But those text amendments can also be initiated strictly by the Edna Zoning Commission on their own, and they've been involved in this process for actually years, going through, I mean, a number of years, back when I was a trustee, 20 years ago, going through and trying to update piece by piece our zoning resolution. And then there can also be individuals who come in and say, "I'd like to see a text amendment," and they could initiate that as well. So, those are the three ways. But this is the process that the current board is looking to update our zoning resolution. Our zoning commission is doing it, and we've also had discussions, possibly in the future, of contracting with the firm to do a complete overhaul of our entire zoning resolution so that it'll be more compatible, and it's really the next layer that sits on top of the future land use plan, which will be coming before this board on June 26th. That presentation and, and public comment at that time as well. So, there is a process, but, you know... So there is a process, but, you know, if you look at the city of Columbus, they're updating their zoning code, too. So these are the things to, with the changing times, but also things that we feel that are no longer appropriate in the zoning code.
But I think that's exactly the problem. Everything I hear at these meetings is what I don't like, what I think is inappropriate. It has very little to do with actual business and people that pay for all this.
Well, this is the reason we have public hearings, so we can hear both sides of the issues and everyone that has an interest.
But what effect are all our voices? Pretty much nothing.
Well, that's your opinion, sir.
Well, it's, let's just see then. Because I, that's the way it's been so far. When you come to these meetings and speak, then you guys still do what you want to do. I mean, with the zoning up here, Marcus, no, no, no.
Well, your time has expired, sir. Thank you for your comments.
My time expired four hours ago.
I'm going to take a nap. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Evans, do you have something to say?
Yeah, just a brief comment. The plan is eventually to look to see what we can add, what we can encourage the good businesses and that. But this is about proper classification within our district, period. There are uses in there that are not compatible. Separate commissions and agencies have agreed. It's just not personal opinion up here. A lot of due diligence has been completed in this matter. And as far as not addressing the good or the bad, right now, on some of these issues, it's a triage moment. We've got to address these. I've been pushing for these to be addressed for years and now is the opportunity to at least address this. But my hope is eventually we'll address the other ones. Like I said, I have concerns about semi-fueling allowed in many areas of the township that aren't appropriate. So those are the kind of things, again, quality of life. I've been a proponent of supporting businesses, bringing good businesses in, actually helping businesses with economic incentives that benefit the community, not just these large developers. Because small business is the backbone of not only this country, but this community. So, I mean, Small Business Park or whatever we can do. But again, when you're up against a similar district, especially residential, that's where the issues come. If you have an M1 next to M2, that M1 use isn't going to bother them, too. But it will with residents. And that's what we've heard. And I think that is what we should really take into account and we did tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, for your efforts here. I want to thank staff and everyone else that this has been a long process, a lot of time and a lot of input from the community as well. So I want to thank you for that. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Burkeholder?
Yes, we stand adjourned. Thank you for coming.